All right. I got a feeling we're gonna get out of here before 10 o'clock tonight, folks. We've got a lot of things, but I don't see anything real lengthy. Joel, we put permit fees and Camp Jack lease on there. Kinda just to recap what we did last week. We went ahead and those are already approved, the permit fees and the lease. But we have sent out the final to you earlier this week. Everyone should have received. And therefore, we just wanted you to have it and look at it. If you had any questions, fine, but...
Have you had very much feedback on the permit fees?
I have not. Bob might be able to speak to that.
Other than a response from the folks that met with you two weeks ago. Exceptionally very appreciative of the direction that the city council took to help alleviate the problems with housing.
Bill?
Sir?
Hi. We had gotten started and we just...
I've been around here with him.
Oh, okay. Well, I saw you up here, and that's why I said, well, he's gotta be at home, so let's go ahead and start without him. We just spoke about the permit fees, and I think Bob gave a little report on that. I know they are in place. We approved them. But we sent you all copies of what was finalized, both that and the Camp Jack lease. So, the Camp Jack lease, I'm assuming we have Matt Russell with us tonight? Are you there, Matt? We may need to close those doors.
Matt is not with us.
Matt's not with us? Okay. I thought he was gonna request something tonight. He asked me for something, and I asked him to come to the council. And I think that's the way we'll need to do it going forward. We had a wonderful celebration, ceremonial signing of the lease. Four of you all attended, and that was great. And this young lady pointed out to me the day after, she says, "Do you know you had one person from each ward?" Yeah, okay. That was kinda cool. So, yeah, way to go. But I think we all felt that that went well. Did you all, Bill?
Oh, yeah.
Larry? Mary Jean? And Joel? So, yeah, thank you all for coming. All right. Joel? This young lady out here, her name is Marie, and she wants to speak from the Youth Leadership Academy. She's got a video to show and wants to talk about call boxes. So, Marie, if you would come up, please.
Hello, I am Marie Kershaw. I am the representative of the Youth Leadership Academy of Boone County. Today, we have a video presentation for our proposal of emergency stations at Lake Harrison Park. I believe Wilson has the video.
Wilson's gonna show this for us. Jeff, we have no volume?
Wilson, I think you're muted. Yeah, so, okay, so maybe I need to be unmuted. Tell me if you've got volume right here to send this.
We hope that you will consider our requests and please...
Yes, volume? Okay, I'll turn it over here. So, I need to be unmuted to show some volume. Okay, here.
Hello, City Council, we're here today...
And you probably need to shoot my screen, too. Just try it.
Hello, City Council, we're the Youth Leadership Academy, and today, we'd like to tell you about our community service project to improve the safety of downtown Harrison. We hope that you will consider our requests and please enjoy this inspirational video. There are so many fun things to do at the park. You can play on the paddle, take down your flag, and greet people.
Are you telling my car, or are you getting away?
No, get away from me! Hello, somebody's calling 1-11, I don't have a cell phone! Hello, hello, are you okay? Are you okay? Are you okay? Hi! The speed is not as high as the other ones. Please ask the local community and then please tell the survey at 2:20. They listed five of the top authorities that needed to be addressed on their case. Our project cannot pick three out of the five.
The day of our survey, a hundred people, and they said they monitored the state during the day, but when it was night, they didn't go figure all. But one thing that they all agreed on was that they knew they felt real safe if we had the routes and policies.
How it works, they have a Sony clock, they have four dollar options, and they have two cameras, one with a 360 degree view, first of announce, and then one at high level to watch the event off and on. These stations can also be used for non-emergency use, but when people want to leave and stop in their cars. Then universities that activate duty, these stations are often at EWC. Communities that use stations are faithful, visit Kittenville and other places. We have talked to many different companies that have these call outlets. It was very, very customizable, because they have non-solar options and solar options, and these include Wi-Fi and non-Wi-Fi infrastructure. But now, we actually use these call outlets when they have a cell phone nearby. Well, there are a couple of reasons. First of all, having an emergency call outlets is everyone's business and make you unsafe. Second of all, it's much easier to wind up the button when you're in a city center and start having a conversation immediately with the emergency officers and knowing exactly where you are than to share your current background. We also talked to various local entities to hear their opinion on our project. The fire department and the police department both agree that the best place to put the light would be the state, the soccer complex, and the playground. The police department also added that it's important that you keep your light out of the reach of children. The emergency management said that this would be a solution to the call volume, and that most of the calls are medical and not realistic. In our research, we found that if these units, the lighting installed units, initially funded the off, uh, the hardware option, the upfront cost for those units is gonna be about $10,000 to $20,000. And these can include attached cameras, and most of the fees for that unit is going to cover TRS and RBS number. Some communities found that solar options would be easier, because you do not have the underground wiring. The only non-microwave device would be the wireless connection, which is much like a solid bill.
Our residential police station is in the highest poverty areas of Wonderwood Park, the United States, and Southern Park.
We hope that you'll consider this aspect of safety on your chosen parks if they continue to expand now and in the future, and keep closing normal stations.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Do you have anything else to add?
One thing to note is, if we do get the solar option, which tends to be cheaper, there will be no cameras that can be attached to those.
Yeah, and I know, we met before, Marie and I, and she told me a little bit about it. And when she mentioned cameras is when I got a little more excited about it. So, I would hate to do that without the cameras, but I know that's, it's all about cost. So, any questions for Marie?
And which is the camera cost?
What would it be with camera compared to, or solar just eliminates camera completely?
Yes, so solar would only have the option to call to the station and the light on the top. Hardwire can have the camera as well. It can have the top surveillance one, which is much like normal security cameras, and it can also have one that kinda sees the face level of the caller.
Okay, okay.
Let me ask a question, Joel. I'm not in committee, so let's lie. Can you use the camera to monitor the location even if the call's not made?
Yes, it would be on constantly, basically.
And I ask that question because I have had some people that were, had concerns of individuals in the park late at night, and they might not frequent the park if there's too many individuals there, and this might allow people to use it a little more, because they feel safer.
Yeah. Mitch, that's a good lead-in to a statement that I think we'll all agree, we're coming to an age where we're probably gonna eventually see cameras all over town. I actually received a call last week and wanted to know how many cameras we had throughout the city. And I thought, and I said, hmm, do we have any cameras throughout the city? I know we have cameras at our facilities, but throughout the city, I don't know of any. Wade, do you know of any cameras other than ours in our facilities? Does police have any?
There's one on top of the tower.
On top of the tower, on the water tower?
Yeah. On top of Crockett's building.
Oh, oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
That belongs to KY3, yes.
I'll admit, okay.
But that's still possible to get what, run KY3 what you need.
I ask a question, what, where's that, how's that stored? Is that, is that just a live feed only from that camera, or is it actually, is that data stored cloud-based or anything like that?
So, there is an option to just have it directly connected to the camera, although that's pretty unsafe, because somebody could just snatch the camera at any time. If we did want cameras, they would be hooked up wireless through internet.
I'm sure there's recording options if it's coming.
Probably cloud-based.
Any other questions? Is there something you're asking for tonight? I noticed Dan was out in the hall. Now, is Dan with you, or is he with, he's with them? Okay.
If I could.
Dan Dillard?
You know, the Youth Leadership Program is part of the Chamber's Leadership Program. They have an Adult and Youth Program. We have adult facilitators with the youth. Dan and Ty Freeman from Banco ZK are the two adult facilitators for the youth this year for the academy. So, they've been with them each step of the way. And I think what we found, what Wilson and I saw, what Dan and Ty saw, this project is their idea, not a single person, adult, had anything to do with it. And I'll admit, we were shocked when they came forward and said, "Here's what we wanna do." So, this is a request to the city council to fund those three cameras. That's its intent.
So, we have a request to fund three cameras. I guess that'll end up with you, Mr. Magnus.
Currently resides in that committee, but we can take it to the next committee, the next...
Sure, sure.
In the next group.
We've talked cameras in the past, and they are kind of expensive, and they need to be out of reach.
Sure.
Because they could disappear.
And there's a lot of things to be done, as far as, as far as cameras, cameras aren't easily manipulated. Whereas, don't handle cameras are probably a bit of application for the park to do.
Another question, Mr. Chair. Will the police department have access to that, those, I mean, is that where they'll be monitored, I assume?
We're not quite sure, but that would more be a question for someone else.
Or will it be 911? I doubt 911 would have that ability to monitor those.
What would the calls though, too? Would the call button?
Those would go to the emergency management.
911.
Is it 911?
911.
Okay.
So, then they'd probably have to monitor the cameras as well.
I would assume, yeah. I don't know, Mitch.
Yeah, it would make sense for them to, you know, get a call and not be able to see who and what's going on.
Yeah. Do you know, Bob, if the call, if the call button went off at 911, would they be able to view if it had a camera?
I don't know how that, how that actually works.
Is it appropriate for me to chime back in here?
Sure.
Whenever, they, the other universities are places that use these kind of call box functions. Whenever the button is pressed, it's treated just like a 911 call. And so, for the purposes of their project, I think they didn't go into a lot of the camera stuff, because that got into how do you get power to those stations, how do you get Wi-Fi and infrastructure there to be able to do a lot of other things, whereas the solar options, which were a little bit more cost-effective, were more of plug-and-play, so to speak, because you could, you could add one at any time, and since it was just, it operated kinda like a cellphone, that was the easiest thing to do for the project. But as far as cameras go, that's probably another level of infrastructure that should be left up to the discretion of the council.
Another, sorry. Another thing to be mentioned is, we can install just the, like, emergency kind of poles at the moment, but they will have a camera arm. They're about, I believe, nine feet tall, and then the camera arm is another foot or so up off the ground. The camera can be attached and installed at a later date.
I would ask for comment from our fire chief and police chief, if they have it.
Mitch, I'm on here. Mark. You know, anytime we can make a call-out that's easier for the public, it's certainly a good idea. I do think there's some logistics there that we'd have to work out, as far as who answers it and monitors it, you know, especially with Chief Grady moving his dispatches over 911, where we're all gonna be over there. It would certainly call on somebody to monitor those. I think it's a discussion we need to have with Daniel over 911 as well.
Marie, do you know who you talked, who the group talked to, the police department and the fire department?
I'm not quite sure. I was not the one to reach out to this.
They were both contacted personally for this presentation.
We did also contact Daniel at the emergency management.
Okay. Mitch, is that what you wanna recommend to, well, put it on the agenda for the next month's committee meeting?
Well, next month's committee, or, you know, I don't see any reason to move it any, forward any faster without someone taking another look at it.
Sure, sure. This is, I don't think we're in any hurry for this, are we, Marie?
We do graduate in April, I believe, but the project can take longer if need be.
Okay. Most of the people on your, on your group, are they all seniors now?
They're juniors at the moment.
So, they'll still be in school next year?
Yes.
Would they still be involved in this program as seniors, or is this just encompassed juniors? I believe that it does.
The YLA will graduate in April, so they won't technically not be a part of the YLA next year.
So, I think their group with the council, or the chamber will experiment, but they'll graduate from that.
Gotcha. And I'm sure they'll, will there be another group that can take it on?
Yes, this is an annual program.
Okay. Because this is definitely something that I'm sure the council would, won't make a decision before you leave school, you know, if it's April. It'll take longer than that, so this'll have to be picked up, probably in the fall even. Is that what you're thinking, Mitch?
Well, like I say, I think what we'd need to do is, well, we've got basic information, but we'd need to have a vendor come to us and say, "This is where we wanna put them." You know, we need, I think, research of, right. Not just estimates of cost, but actual...
Yeah. We'd like to see, see something, maybe, like he said, a vendor? If a vendor could come in, or if you can get some product, or...
We did.
You know, whoever puts them in, Bentonville or at the university, I think it's, personally, I think it's a really good idea, given the use of the park. You know, my wife and I have been down there in the evening, and not that there's nefarious things going on, but you sometimes wonder who these people are or whatever. And to have a box there, and I also see the potential, as Chief Lowry kind of hinted at, from an emergency standpoint, child gets hurt, somebody around the stage during an event, can't hear if they pick up the box, the call box, there's an immediate response.
Yeah. Whose budget would this fall under?
That's another question I asked. I don't know where Luke would wanna put this, that...
Sounds like parks.
Well, I sort of say, initially, I would say parks for buildings and ground, but I would defer to Wade and Luke for that.
All right.
Hey, you know, I think, obviously, this is a parks project. With that being said, I think we all know that funding through parks right now is, is not dedicated, so that would have to come out of probably general fund at that point in time, which is where buildings and ground would come. Obviously, it's not in the budget, so you're looking at any kind of reserve funds that would be available.
Well, look, I'm not only thinking of, the initial project may be parks, but I don't know if the ongoing expense, you'd wanna put it in parks. I don't know. I've seen you win, but I don't know that for sure without thinking through it more.
Again, we'll probably have a discussion at that point in time about where that would fall. That's probably a conversation for the council to have, as far as how we would like to take that out. You know, we've always considered, or we've always considered the maintenance, I guess, of parks under maintenance and buildings and grounds, and been taking care of it. However, you know, soccer, it's gonna run on the soccer fields, which the parks take care of, so you're probably looking at something that, somebody's gonna have to decide where that funding's gonna come out of.
Well, I mean...
Get together, our heads, and come up with a recommendation.
Is that cellular connection, if that's an ongoing monthly fee, where, you know, where does that budget it out? Is there something in our, the rest of our line items to cellular use within the city? So, like I say, without reviewing it more, I don't exactly know. I'm not as much concerned about the total cost, just making sure that it gets appropriately processed. So, I would say we move this to the April committee for more discussions and have them come back with a vendor.
Okay. Is that possible, guys? Okay. Okay, Marie, you did a terrific job. Thank you. Your mother's watching, by the way, so, say hi, Mom! Yeah, good deal. Thank you. And we'll keep it with, keep it with you, Mitch.
Well, on financials, I had a discussion with Luke earlier, it's kind of a slow time. Once again, January's not completely done, and we're waiting for a year in numbers, because there's not really much else from, from finance. But I will go ahead and remind everybody, because it was such good news, that our December numbers were the best sales tax ever, and I'm looking for a continuation of that good news over the next several months, so never know what's gonna occur. But if City Harrison, from an economic standpoint, we've seen good numbers. So, other than that, I don't have anything else from finance.
Luke, you have anything you wanna add?
Not necessarily. I think we did have a discussion with the guy from Walmart, and I won't, obviously, we didn't get any kind of trade secrets, but we do match up as far as increases or decreases with Walmart. So, anytime they're up, we're up, they're down, we're probably down. So, so it goes the way of our community.
We ended the year almost to the percentage exactly as Walmart, you know, up. We were up 8%. So, that was almost exact, and Walmart's projecting, I believe, Luke, to be fairly flat this year, which that means equal to last year. We would be delighted to be equal to last year, because we were up 8%.
But I don't think we'll see the growth numbers like we did last year. I don't expect it to go negative as far as growth, but I don't think, you can only count increases like that for so long, if we have to look at it from a conservative and realistic standpoint.
Yeah. Okay. I guess, down to Mary Jean?
You missed Larry.
I'm sorry. Thank you for keeping me up on that. Larry Phillips?
Well, we just have a couple things. I was talking to David Wilson, and he was talking about, he was getting the technology out to some of the city associates and keeping them updated and more information for them working within one of the different places. I think that's great, and I think David's doing a good job getting that out.
Excellent job, yes. That's it? Okay. All right. Mary Jean?
I believe we need our chief to discuss this lease.
I'm on my way down.
Okay.
He's in his office.
They got him woke up.
All right. One thing that I want to speak to y'all about tonight, that I would encourage y'all to move to the regular council, is we've been looking at a few ways to save space, and we keep hard files. We've got hard files from 1978. Before that, I guess they were destroyed. But there are certain files that we have to keep permanently, and those we will. But, and according to Arkansas State statute, said all case files generated, they can be scanned and secured in a server, which we have a server. And that server, it's basically a document storage archival and retrieval system, and we can go back and pull those files anytime. It's not only saved here, it's backed up at other servers through this, this company that we use. So, if we were to get wiped out by a natural disaster here, we're, we're on file at this other place in some other state, so we could get it. And Grant, did we say we need a resolution or ordinance for this?
I'm not sure we really necessarily need either, but I think we should present something to council, so council is aware of.
Right.
I mean, the law allows the storage automatically, generally speaking, of these hard copies to be converted to electronic copies. There are exceptions, so some, some things, as Chris and I have talked about, have to be stored permanently or in a hard way, but otherwise, they can be transferred. So, I think mainly it's, it's a way for the police department to inform council of its intention, and I think Chris and I thought it would be nice to have some kind of resolution or ordinance, that way council could simply see what was happening and have a way to discuss it and approve it.
So, what I'm proposing is to get the council's approval. Once we scan files, those files will be destroyed. The scanned file will become the permanent record of the police department. That way, if we need to retrieve a report, we don't have to go back and dig through paper boxes and papers. We can actually pull it up, we've scanned the original file, we hit print, we print it off, we have a report. Now, the exception to that is, we will maintain all hard files on Class Y felonies, as well as other homicide investigations, regardless of classification. This would include rape and kidnapping investigations. The reasons for keeping these hard files is that in the unlikely event, an original document needs to be scrutinized, such as in an appeals process, you know, we could, we'd have that ability to just say, "This is the original file." And, and the reason that those obviously are important, that's requires the, you know, the lengthy prison sentences for certain individuals that commit those crimes. But other than that, our accidents, our normal theft, anything like that, once we get it in and get it filed, we'll scan it, we'll save it, and the original, all the original hard copies, all the paper copies, will be put into the box to go to the shredders. And that will save us, well, that'll save us room as far as storage goes. And that's, that's what I'm proposing tonight. There's other agencies that, that have started doing this, and there's actually three state statutes on the books that allow us to do this. So, once, once an accident report's scanned, we'll do the witness statements, we'll do the accident report, and once we, once we shred it, that scanned report will be the permanent file of the Harrison Police Department, and we can reproduce that at any time. Is there any questions?
How will you keep the original? Will you destroy it immediately? Will you keep it a year?
We'll just have to set up a process. I mean, once it's scanned, we'll still be able just to go get it. I mean, once it's scanned, we'll still be able just to go get it. We'll just set up a process once it's turned in. Of course, accident reports are saved in what, the egress system? And they're technically, we can pull them up anytime, as it is now.
I just wanted to ask you to keep them for 12 months, and then anything older than 12 months, it's not a class Y felony.
No. I think immediately, we're going to get rid of it. That way, we're not having to worry about, well, is that one a year old, or that one a year old? No, we're just going to get it, we've got the report, now that we have it, scan it. And see, right now, all of our reports are computer-generated. All the reports we do are on a computer already, so therefore, we're just basically moving it. So, hopefully, we're not going to need near as much paper as we've used in the past. But the big thing is space, storage, and there's just, there's just not enough. As a matter of fact...
You could sign the electric copy if you wouldn't even need the...
Oh, and we have electric signatures already. I had them before we left state, so we've been using them for a while.
Is there any more discussion? I'm getting our damn motion to take it to council.
Second. All right, I will make that motion.
All in favor?
All right, before we do that, I was seeing that he did reference this on news last night, of the Class Y felony stuff, and they made a rule to kill them 100 years.
Well, some of it, we got to keep permanently.
Well, yeah, but their rule was 100 years last night, and this place...
Well, you'd think anybody involved in a crime, at the 100 years, they'd be gone, so...
I was just going to throw that out there, too, that's what we did last night.
Well, some things, you know, like obviously homicides, we're going to keep forever, as long as we can, and that's what's going to be so great about our new evidence unit we're going to have out there. It's going to have plenty of things, places for us to put this stuff, so...
And like Chris said, you know I work down here, and I know what files and stuff built up like that here. They need, this will be a definite improvement for the police department here, and it'll be a safe way to do it, too.
But even on the files you're keeping, then the scans serve as a backup.
Right. They'll be scanned also, right, right. We'll scan everything, but the only ones we'll keep is the Class Y felonies and the homicides, rapes, and what was that other one? Kidnappings. So, all right, any other questions?
Mary, do you want in this motion, before we go any further? I think we could do this in resolution, and I would like to see it on paperwork that the council has done this. So, I think a resolution that goes out of grant would be a good way for us to handle.
Yeah, that's fine, and I think I could have it in two weeks. Chris and I have been working on this and looking at it for some time. I think it's fairly straightforward, but, you know, if not in two weeks, certainly we could have it in a month, so...
So, we'll put it in the form of a resolution, okay?
Who did the second?
Joel.
If you're backed up, I'll redo the motion and add that we did it before.
All right.
I'll say it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Go take it to council.
Thank you. Anything else before I'm gone? Thank you.
I seen where the dog went home.
Dog went home. New dog's coming next week. Or no, maybe he's getting him this weekend, but training starts week after next, so we're anxious to get that one.
Thank you, Chief, for adding.
Thanks, Chief.
Yeah, oh boy. Okay, Mary Jean. All right, let's go on to Bill.
The item is our agenda, which is the request to purchase a new snowplow. We're going to focus on that through April, just because of timing. There's still some bid out there, it's got to happen. Wade, are you there?
Yeah, we don't have the cost info we need right now to really have a serious discussion and make decisions. I just asked Councilman Boswell earlier today if we could keep this back one month, and hopefully, we'll have everything we need.
That's all. Other than, Wade, have you got anything else for the committee?
No, not for this meeting. I will tell you, in two weeks, at the regular council meeting, we will have Arkansas Gaming Fish, as well as some other team partners that have been working on the permanent design and take a look at possibility of restoring Crook Creek to a natural stream. So, we'll have a presentation on what the designs look like, the potential for the park in the area around the stream, looks if restored, as well as some potential funding partners. It should be, should be an exciting meeting. Hope everybody can make it. We're getting pretty excited about how this is starting to develop. It's a kind of long process, but they seem that they're starting to come together, and I think we'll probably see a little steam building on the project in a couple weeks. But other than that, I would be happy to answer any questions if anybody has something they need now.
Any questions, Wade?
Mr. Boswell?
Yes.
Ma'am, I have a question about Goblin Drive. I was asked if we're on pace with the plans for Goblin Drive and how it was looking. Anything we could see?
We're moving along. The plans and specifications, the documents, contract documents, all of that is done and ready to go. Last thing we're trying to tie down is the relocations for Energy on the distribution lines adjacent to the first phase of Goblin. I had actually a meeting earlier this week with one of Energy's engineers, as well as a property owner out there, to go over their proposed publications with that property owner. He seemed okay with it, so Energy's going to go ahead and finish out their design, get me the info I need to make sure that they got adequate permits to do that relocation. If they don't, I'll need to acquire that. Right now, we are looking at a potential bid in early to mid-May, is what we're looking at. Energy will have their relocations done, but we need to get it bid out as quickly as possible, get a contractor under contract, so that he can get the bridge steel order. That's going to be a long lead time item, and we want to get, one, we want to get it ordered, so we can get construction going, and two, we're going to lock in prices, just in case we start seeing more chartered races on steel.
Thank you, Mr. Boswell. All right.
Wade?
Okay.
All right.
All right, thank you, Bill. Wayne?
This is the item returning to city council. New items, my computer just went dead on me against the power system, and I don't have any information of anything that I could need to bring up.
Okay. Good. I know, I looked down at your area, and I didn't see anything there, and I thought something was wrong, but it looks like we're good. So, that's wonderful. We're moving along pretty good. Does anybody have any, anything you want to talk about up until now? You're all good? Okay. Let's go on to some old business. We have Creekside Community Center we've been talking about. I think you all heard the big news. Mountain Home passed theirs last night, or Tuesday? Tuesday. And they narrowly passed it. They were actually moved down after early voting, but they squeaked it out, I think it was 807 to 740, possibly. Luke would know those exact, but it's real close to that number. I think the thing that's interesting, and something I'd like to convey to the community right now, and this is one of the resources we have to communicate with the community, thanks to that gentleman sitting back there in the back. We will probably, when ours passes, we would end up with probably about 75% of what they will have, for half of the price. So, I think that's something to be proud of, so... Another thing that we were able to achieve, when it comes to fees, whatever we decide, and I say we, for the most part, right now, we have a group, about five of us, that are talking fees, and we've got some ideas. But when we do end up with that, I think our process would be, this is what I'd recommend, we don't do this every day, so we don't have a standard or something in the past for this, is we'd like to run it through the advisory committee at Parks and Rec, and then when we come out of that, we'd like to bring it to you folks for approval on the fees, membership fees. I would like to announce, we enrolled three young ladies that did a lot of research this week for us on other towns our size. In regards to low-income membership, that was something that we wanted to be able to address. I think, I feel strongly that if we don't allow the low income in at a free or reduced rate, then they may not get there. And I think it's very important that they get inside this facility. I think it'll do a lot for them, their family, and the city as a whole. That's my personal opinion. So, with that in mind, we researched the others, and the committee came back with a recommendation, and just this afternoon, we came up with, we would like to offer free membership to those in the community that are at 60% of the average family household income, or less. We have HUD publishes three different categories, low, very low, and extremely low. And we were really headed toward very low, that's in the middle, and that's 50%. But 50% for a family of four is $26,000. And we felt strongly that we would leave out a lot of low incomes if we only hit that $26,000. So, by going to 60%, we actually hit right at $31,000. So, that would allow a family of four, under $31,000, to have free membership to the community center, not to the aquatics. That's going to have a whole lot of different concerns, and membership is going to be really necessary there. And we believe, we had some real good discussions, that that needs to be paid for. So, but allowing low-income families free membership to all the courts, the walking tracks, all of the rooms inside, and there will be many of those, so we feel pretty proud of that. And just for your information, again, we will bring all this back to your approval after we settle on something. I'm not sure we're even going to settle on rates right now for memberships. You know, there's a, parts of us that believes we really can't do that two years in advance. So, hopefully, we can come up with something to tell the public, because the public would like to know what they're going to be, but it might be irresponsible for us to assign a rate two years from now. But that will definitely going to be as low as possible and lower than most. The great news again is, we will, if this passes, we will be the lowest taxed city out of 20 that are similar to Harris. We will be the lowest. The lowest. So, even if it passes, of course, we're the lowest now. So, you add a half onto what we are, and we would still be the lowest. Any questions about what's going on at Creekside? Okay?
You made the comment, Mr. Mayor, that their project would achieve about 75% of what they're building for half the price. It's actually a third of the price, is it not?
No, 20. Ours is 20 million, theirs is 40.
30 minutes.
Yeah, so... But, what a huge difference. When you can get 75% for half, that sounds good, and I hope the community would appreciate that. And I realize, you know, taking the junior high, you know, was the right move. If this passes or not, or if it doesn't, it was the right move. You know, where we would go from there, I don't know, but, you know, we're just keeping our fingers crossed that this might work this time. Let's go down to new business. Hey, we have the Ignite group with us. I think they're all Zoomed tonight, and they're talking about somebody's favorite subject, marijuana. Hey! Who do we have?
Hi.
We didn't know what committee to give this to, so...
Can you see, can you see us straight?
Yeah, we can see you. Speak as loud as you can, please.
I'm Maria Sashbog. I am the vice president of Ignite. I'm Karen Roberts on the treasurer of Ignite. I'm here to present marijuana, it's to opt out of recreational marijuana, and it's Harmful effects, it can cause breathing problems, it can have the same health issues as someone who smokes cigarettes, it can cause psychological disorders, it can damage your motor skills, and if diagnosed with mental disorder, it can intensify your symptoms. For medical uses, it can increase blood flow, it can prevent people with certain medical conditions, it can help MS, nausea, vomiting, and chemotherapy. A low dose of THC can help people not be less nervous about commitment speed, it can help sleep, apnea, and vital maladria, and chronic pain. What Arkansas officials have had to say about recreational marijuana. State Drug Director Kirk Lane said that science drives their opinion on why they believe marijuana should not be legalized. Lane referenced this public health advisory issued by the Arkansas Department of Health. For Lane and Sergeant General Dr. Greg Bloodsoe urged Arkansas to be aware of the use of products derived from cannabis, including marijuana, and the harmful risks associated with those products. It cited marijuana as addictive, more potent than before, and it's associated with a number of adverse health outcomes. State Drug Chief Kirk Lane and Dr. Bloodsoe follow the list of what they say are new stats. Lane says more states legalize the drug. They pointed to a higher car crash rates, increase in schizophrenia, and permanent cognitive loss for young people. Arkansas is a long way to go to catch up with the rest of the nation, he said, referring to overdose rates that increased in Arkansas counter to the national trend. That's why recreational marijuana, adding natural to an already burning fire, is dangerous. And this is a slide, we're not going to talk about it, but Sam stands for Smart Approach to Marijuana. If you want information, Sam has all the information. Executed summary, today's marijuana is harmful, often 30 times stronger than marijuana of the past. Legalization in the U.S. has had significant costs, hospital visits, workplace productivity, car crashes, second-hand smoke issues, and environmental concerns. Medical marijuana and recreational marijuana can be very different things. One can be a medicine, and one is used for intoxication. Legalization violates U.N. treaties and goes against the spirit of international cooperation against drugs, leading public health authorities to oppose legalization. Legalization will not solve the violent problem. Lame and hurtels make billions from legal industries, and legalization will only enrich hurtels. Is marijuana safer than alcohol? Is alcohol legal because it's safe? Marijuana's effects last longer. Abusers report far more problems at home, work, and school. People rarely substitute prop for booze, but instead, they mix them instead. Lots of people drink, but very few use marijuana, despite what you see on TV. Despite the increasing popularity of using marijuana, it is illegal because it's harmful. Increased quantity of smoking. Today's marijuana is not the marijuana of the past. You cannot compare 99% THC purity with the 3% to 5% purity of the past. Researchers are not in favor of legalization. Two, international law, marijuana is illegal under the application of the three international treaties, otherwise known as the single conference conventions. Three, legality and foreignance. People marijuana... Keeping marijuana legal is a key public health strategy. Legal drugs are used for more than illegal ones.
Current regulatory failures: It has no potency caps, black markets and cartels, increased access for minors, pesticides and contaminants, and is recommended for pregnant women. For the crime, insurance claim rates for motor vehicle accidents from 2012 to 2016 were about 3% higher in states with legalized marijuana than in states without. Traffic fatalities have increased over 31% since 2013. A number of drivers who have been involved in traffic fatalities have tested positive from marijuana in their systems, along with the deaths rising from 55 in 2013 to 115 in 2018. Hannah Roberts.
We are passionate about keeping our community free from recreational marijuana. Thank you for allowing us to become this very important topic for you.
And there is actually an ordinance for recreational marijuana.
Okay.
It's from Ruffel.
I think you all received a copy of the ordinance. I have one here in front of me, and it pretty much just says that they are asking the council to create an ordinance. What's the proper word? Not allowing marijuana, recreational marijuana, to be sold in the city of Harrison. All right, ladies. Any questions for the ladies? They did a great job, by the way. They spoke up. Well, I don't even see them. Okay.
There's going to be an ordinance, Mr. Mayor. Would that not come from?
It would.
The Attorney General's Commission?
It would, yeah. This would go back to Wayne. Do you have anything to add, sir?
What timeline do we need to act on this? Or what is the timeline we need to act on?
Ladies, Chrissy?
Yes.
Yeah.
We appreciate you guys letting these girls present their case, and this is about legalizing or finding an ordinance before it becomes legalization, if recreational marijuana becomes legal in the state of Arkansas. Several counties have opted out of having recreational marijuana in their communities, and these girls are passionate about what they can do about keeping their community free from recreational marijuana.
Okay.
We've heard that it's going to be on the ballot this year, so it's not when, it's or not if, it's when this happens.
Okay.
We're trying to be proactive.
Chrissy, what is the timeline that you're wanting to see us do this?
Well, we'd like to present it to the city council at the city council meeting if possible.
I know, but what timeline?
This month, next month?
This month would be fine.
I don't have a copy of that sample ordinance.
Did you know you had one?
I don't have it either. And I was grabbing about what we need to do, and he was wanting to see something on the ballot, so.
Yeah.
He said, send you a copy of the ordinance. I did send it along with this link. I think the mayor may have that. Do you have that, Mayor Jackson?
Have the link, I'm sure I do.
I can resend it.
We can, no, we can get it too.
We can all review the ordinance from Ruffelville, and we could come back in April to present it, if that would be, that way you could do a little more research on that and have a clearer idea of what these girls are trying to do.
I think that would be the best for us to do, to just hold off on doing anything until...
That's what we're hearing. Maybe come back in April, Chrissy. When you get the ordinance, you're going to...
That would be great, and, you know, I'm going to put this little plug in here while I've got y'all.
Uh huh.
I've got a captive audience here. We actually are doing a presentation at the JPH, April 20th. It is a conference on the impacts and expectations of marijuana, legalization of marijuana. We will be having Attorney General or Surgeon General Bloodsoe and Senator Bloodsoe as guest speakers. We will also have Haida with High Intensity, Greg Frackenstein, some one or another from Colorado, that have, they just have a ton of information that they have brought us to show about the impact legalization of marijuana has done to their state. And that might be something that you might want to, it's free of charge, it might be something that you might want to attend to educate yourself a little more as these girls are trying to fulfill their project.
All right, thank you. What's the date, Chrissy, again?
Actually, April 20th, and it's from 10 to 3 at the JPH, and it's free of charge. And if you let me know, I will leave a feed you if you show up a person, so I can have a good count.
Yeah. Folks, when you get the ordinance that you'll be looking at, most of it is information, whereas there's only one small section there. It looks, Wayne, if you saw that Section 2, which only is three or four sentences, that's the bulk of it. You know, the purpose of this ordinance is to prohibit the operation of retail recreation marijuana stores in the city limits. That's it in a nutshell, so we'll be glad to...
I have also uploaded it to all your Google Maps.
Okay, you have it now.
I saw that you just uploaded it.
Yeah.
So thank you very much.
But really, that one section is pretty much it. Okay, thank you. Let's go on down to, hey, here's an interesting one: Creation of Parks Department Standing Council Committee. It came to our attention, myself and department heads, about a week ago, that we overloaded one department, and that being Joel, Community Environment. By throwing Parks up there, we expect Parks to really need a committee of its own, and it should be very active going forward. And we talked to Joel, and Joel said he would love to have somebody take that if they would. And we happen to have a gentleman that is on the Parks Advisory Committee, or actually represents the council with the Parks Advisory Committee. And who would know more about that than he? So I would like to ask you all to consider moving Parks to its own committee and have this man, Jeremy?
I'll make that motion that we establish a committee for Parks and Rec. and that Jeremy Ragland will be appointed the chairman.
Well, thank you.
Okay, we had a motion by Bill.
Point of order.
Yeah.
Committee meeting, we can't really do that. We'd have to wait till council.
There you go. There you go. Let's make that motion. Moving on. They were pretty anxious.
We don't need the council.
What I say, what he meant to say was, take this before the council.
I'll make a recommendation to take it before the council, and Jeremy Ragland will be now the committee chair of the newly established Parks and Recreation Committee.
And I say...
So what committee would be making that? So all in favor? All right? Anyone opposed? Okay, let's move that on. You okay with that, Jeremy? Hey, we talked...
Sounds like a headliner, no?
Wayne.
Sounds like a headliner. You've got two weeks to try and convince us otherwise.
That's all right. I've got a two-week stay of execution.
Jeremy, you just volunteered.
Hey, let's talk a little bit about COVID. I think you know, you know, nationally seems to be better, statewide, much better, county-wise, so much better. We'll give you some stats as of today. Keep in mind, on our actives, we were at a high of 285. Today, we have 29. So that is just an incredible achievement. We all hope we can hang in there, and you know we're not going to. We actually called the governor's office or the municipal league today and asked them about wearing masks at committee meetings, not committee meetings, but inside this building. We have about 20 people. We stay away from everybody constantly, but when we're out of our seat, we have a policy that we wear masks. And most of us adhere to that. So they said that's still enforced, and we should have another look at that on the first. And I think we expect at that time the mask mandate will be lifted, but we'll have to wait and see if we continue this. You know, we compare to Baxter County in a lot of things we do. We had, they were beating us on actives, but now we're at 29, they are at 62. But keep in mind, we were both up near the 300 mark. Ours was November 22nd, so we're only talking about three months ago. And deaths, I mean, you know, that's the key, key thing here. Ours is, we've had like two probably in the last month, and before that, maybe two in a month. So as bad as it is, the numbers are much better, and they have a higher amount of deaths than us also. So any questions, comments about COVID, folks?
Mr. Mayor, I've watched the state's website for the vaccination updates. Pretty well today, and I'm just looking. It's continuing to come in at a pretty, pretty good clip. Like today, for example, the state received an additional 46,970 doses. So, you know, a few days ago, it was close to 70,000. So it's, that's like a total of over, getting close to 1.4 million received.
Really?
So...
That's almost half.
No, that's not given, that's received.
Right. But if you got them...
It's really becoming more and more available.
I think the disappointing thing that we're seeing is, you guys realize you were all invited, I know most of you have had your shots or had COVID, but you were invited to an event the other day to have one. We're having a hard time finding people to take the vaccine, so that's unfortunate, but it's life. I guess they get a choice. Hey!
I'll take it right now and get somebody else to.
Hey, you were...
That'd be a good counsel.
You were eligible.
I know, but I couldn't get you.
I know, okay, but...
But I'll take it right now.
You are eligible, so that means that anybody that comes up with an extra vaccine, at the end of the day, can call Mitch Magnus.
He can schedule visible?
Seriously. Yeah, you can schedule an appointment. He'd rather work all day, all night.
600 doses available tomorrow, beginning at 8:00 a.m.
And they're still available?
They are available.
Okay.
First come, first served.
He will be working, he will be at lunch break by 8:00 a.m. over at Mountain Home.
So no more appointments?
Tomorrow is first come, first served for all 600 doses.
That would be 7:00.
Yeah. Well, I have one last item here. We were, you know, I should say blown away. Sometime ago, they asked, the municipal league asked us to submit if we had a campaign to prevent, you know, precautionary measures regarding COVID. And we did. We went to the files and pulled out all the stuff, you know, starting with the six. And what we did with the six throughout town, on the floors, everywhere. And then it went on to the mask thing, and well, I hear you're seeing some of this right now. And I'll tell you, that guy with the billboard, the man from Batesville that owns those two billboards, he gave those two us free, and those were up for nearly a year. So that was, that was just something else. And, yeah, you look at the bumper sticker on the back of a car, that was ours, the car signs. I think we had 100 of those out, the sixes on the deal. And then they, we had the campaign where they, the mask campaign, holding on the signs and why they wear, there you go, there's Mr. DeVito. If you guys want to go to DeVito's tonight, it's probably closed by now. So, there you go, a little more signage. But it was really, we didn't realize how much the city had done until we kind of went through all this and set it off. But we got a phone call about a month ago saying we won an award. And I'd like to read this to you right now. It's from State of Arkansas. It says, "Know ye that the governor of the state of Arkansas, reposing special recognition for the distinguished services and deeds of the municipalities of Arkansas hereby awards the city of Harrison for outstanding civic engagement initiatives to the people of Harrison, Arkansas during the COVID-19 health crisis." Signed, our governor. So I think we need to...
Yeah, everybody up next to you, heard you want to come down here next to Wayne.
So that defeats the six.
Yeah, we'll come up next.
I think that's a bad idea.
Yeah, that's right.
The mayor would like, that would be good.
Yeah, I need my picture in the paper. Harrison Daily Times has been very kind to us in that regard. They kind of shared the good news an awful lot. By the way, there was a news story on the media in Springfield last night. Some of that was incorrect. We are not tearing down most of the building in the junior high. Most of it by far will remain up and remodeled. And I think there was one other thing.
Just a little bit, do they like that song?
Come on in.
Smile, Jerry.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you, thank you very much. Now, that was, that was all nice, and we had that last meeting, but we had so much going on that we said, let's kind of hold this over, and we'll get, we'll get a new picture, you know. So...
Is it my turn?
Yeah, unless somebody wants to stop you, anybody have...
Good luck.
No?
We missed this a little bit earlier, that we were going to get together an option down to get rid of a lot of the stuff that's in the old junior high. And department heads have got together, they got their list almost ready. I'm going to go down tomorrow and walk through the junior high with Orion. So here, in the next four or five weeks, we will be having an auction for the city and selling everything down there and the stuff that the Jews and everybody's got together.
And are we going to have a city cleanup?
Wade, you still with us? City cleanup.
I'm not getting a set schedule on that from Orion. I don't think Christine's received it either. That's typically in the mag.
Okay.
Okay.
There's been some questions.
I assume they'll try to do it. Similar to last year, where they knock it out within, you know, one week instead of trying to stretch it out a little bit. As soon as Orion gets everything scheduled, I'm sure we'll get all of that on social media.
Well, Orion did call to inform us that they're adding one new, brand-new truck. So that'll be nice, and so far, it's been so good, so...
Well, Mr. Mayor, Orion called me and asked me what I thought of their service level here, and I told them, you know, citizens of Harrison, members of this council, we need to acknowledge that they, for the most part, have fixed their problems, and we're not getting the complaints that we've gotten in the past.
That's right.
And if, if you're going to criticize when things are bad, you need to compliment when things are good.
And I have to say, things have been so good. And like you said, him making that call, wasn't that great? He calls Wade and I almost weekly, tells us what he's doing. He's calling the council people, you know, and they're...
And asking for, you know, input. He's not just calling to be called, he's asking for input.
They bought Public Works Dinner one night and took it to them during the ice storm. So, I mean, those are some great things that are not that big, but they mean so much, and we need to do more of that. and we need to do more of that sort of stuff. There was something else we had. What was it? Well, maybe I'll remember it in two weeks.
Maybe so, otherwise, let's go home.
All right, thank you.